One.
Hello, Reston community. This is Julie Bitzer, President of Reston Association. And tonight, we're here for a very special meeting of the Board of Directors. It's January 21st, 2021. And this meeting is beginning at 6:00 PM. We have one sole reason for this special meeting, and that is to discuss the Fairfax County ZMod initiative and what information or communication that we wish to deliver to the Fairfax County for their public hearing next Thursday night, the January 28th. So I'd like to call the meeting to order and establish quorum. For quorum purposes, I see John Mooney, our secretary. I see Sarah, our member-at-large, Tom O'Karen, member-at-large, Karen Anton, Hunderswood's Dogwood. I know that Mike Collins will not be joining us tonight. He had an unexpected call out of town, so that does give us five board directors out of our nine, which does establish quorum. I would like to get approval of the meeting agenda. If I might have a motion to approve the meeting agenda.
Move.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Sarah. Appreciate that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All five hands. There we go. It's good. Right. Member comments. Do we have any member comments tonight?
Julie?
Yes.
Hi. This is, yes. Sorry. I had to share this beautiful photograph of the hawk that was taken from the, yeah, I just had to share that with everybody. Beautiful hawk overseeing the golf course. So, yeah, I did want to offer, I don't know if others have member comments, but I did want to share on behalf of the Reston Citizens Association. And I appreciate that you all did get our resolutions that were adopted at our board meeting Monday night onto your Dropbox. So your members, the board should have access to those. I also wanted to-
Could you please state your name and address? And if you're speaking off-
Oh, sorry, Tony. I should know that drill. My name is Lynn Mulston, and I live at 11472 Lynx Drive in Reston, Virginia, 20190. And I serve as Vice President of the Reston Citizens Association. And I am here tonight representing RCA.
Thank you. And yes, we have received your resolution passed on Monday night, and we did include it in the board packet for tonight. So we do have that.
Thank you. So I did want to also alert the board that RCA just hit the send button on a news release that has gone out to several news agencies, basically reiterating the fact that RCA has adopted a set of resolutions intended to outline, excuse me, community concerns with the latest draft of the zoning ordinance modernization project and the specific implications to Reston's planned community. And we did also include a statement from RCA President Dennis Hayes that said RCA has carefully followed the progress of the county staff proposals in the ZMod project. We believe the staff has gone far beyond the intended purpose of ZMod, proposing far-reaching changes with little to no consideration as to the impact that such changes would have on established communities. And he goes on in his statement to say accordingly, the Board of RCA is compelled to join the civic and citizens associations from every corner of the county in opposing this draft of ZMod. And we have adopted the attached resolution, which we included in the press release, the attached resolution at our meeting this past Monday. As noted, we strongly urge the extraneous provisions of ZMod be removed should there be further interest. We have encouraged the community to contact the Fairfax Planning Commission, Fairfax County Planning Commission, and the Fairfax County Board of Supervisors to express their opinions on this issue. So we did include the RCA resolution page as well as the appendix. So you can tell that we worked very hard to get our resolution to one page and then the appendix in the following three pages, two pages. Yeah. So, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And we will include those in our minutes as requested. You're beyond your five-minute period of time for member comments. You didn't need to read it for us. So we have any other member comments? Do I see Connie Harkey?
Well, hello. You do, but I have no comments. I'm just here to listen and absorb. Thank you.
I thought I saw something I hadn't seen before, asked to unmute, and I wasn't sure what that meant. So Lisa, do we have any other member comments?
Don't see any.
Okay. And welcome, Bob Patraine, another member-at-large. So we now have six out of nine with one excuse.
Sorry, I was having 6:30 meetings. I was sitting here reading emails.
There was a test. Okay. All right. Well, onward. John or Larry, who's going to present the basic request here for our action?
Larry, do you want to give the initial report?
Sure. Sure. So as a result of the multiple discussions that we've had and the board has had over the past number of months regarding ZMod, John and I agreed to draft a resolution that really takes off from the letter we saw sent to Walter Alcorn back in November, but goes into more detail, as we suggested in that letter as well, and incorporated a couple other things in there that have come to the fore after that later draft of ZMod came out. We put together this resolution. We did run it by our land use council for some, I think, some good edits, which, so what you see tonight and what is in the board packet is the product of that review. And, you know, we think it's solid. It's the points that we indicated we were going to hit, added a few others. And while we tried to keep it as short and concise as possible, it's difficult to do so. So it is two pages. But I did see RCA's. So we don't have any appendices. But, you know, we put it out here for your discussion tonight. And the other question that I think we would need to resolve tonight because it is directly related is we had talked earlier about doing a video presentation of this and others, which we've got Sean Barami queued up to do so. But also the question of, you know, presentation of that, whether it's going to be a live virtual presentation to the planning commission or just a video submission. So I guess we should discuss that. And frankly, I've not done a planning, a virtual planning commission meeting. I don't know if anybody on this call has, whether Lynn or others. So it would be a new experience for, I think, all of us. But anyways, we should probably discuss that a little bit as well. John, if you want to add anything?
I will. Just in case there's anyone listening who is unfamiliar with ZMod, it is an effort begun by Fairfax County back in 2017 to quote "modernize." So that's where you get the zoning mod, ZMod idea of the Fairfax County zoning ordinance. And the planning commission is due to hear, have a hearing on this draft on January 28th. And the Board of Supervisors proposes to have their hearing on March the 9th. So we had to have this meeting so we could make the March 28th presentation. We are trying to coordinate it with other Reston community groups. Tammy Patraine is kindly trying to line up with the clerk of Fairfax County Board of Supervisors how we might do that in the way we like to do it, where we have an orderly presentation of community positions so that it has an integrated impact, we hope, and thus be able to better persuade the planning commission and the Board of Supervisors ultimately. Since the distribution went out, Bob Patraine has submitted to all board members and senior staff some suggested edits. Bob and I had a chance to chat today. Larry and I have gone over his comments, and we liked most of them and are happy to, very happy to incorporate some of them. There are some, however, where we prefer the original version. So let me indicate where we want to retain our original language. On Bob's page three, he, well, let me go to actually start on page two. The very first, now therefore be it resolved, we had, be it resolved that Reston Association urges the Fairfax County Planning Commission and the Fairfax County Board of Supervisors to take the necessary time to permit full consideration of the proposed zoning, the proposed text, and address the concerns expressed in this resolution as well as by other citizens and other citizen considerations from throughout the county. Bob wanted to make it, have us urge the county board and the planning commission to defer the current schedule. For, based on recommendations from our outside land use council, in order to be more persuasive, we prefer the language be put positively that the county take the necessary time to consider it. The second change that Bob suggested that Larry and I recommend retaining is Bob wanted to eliminate the first whereas on the top of his page three, which has Reston Association supporting ZMod's proposed change concerning the easements, how easements are shown on development plans. Bob understood that to be kind of a compliment to Fairfax County. It's actually something very much in Reston Association's interests that we have a fuller description of easements on these plans. And this is something that some developers will probably oppose. So I think it's important for us to retain that language because it's helpful for us to be very clear on the easements because frequently work in the easements bleed over into areas that are of interest to us.
Especially with our DOB folks. That be it further resolved, right? The second, be it further resolved.
Right. And I'm missing one other thing. Oh, the, this is, this is on page one, actually. One of the whereas is, the original language has Reston is the largest of three planned residential community zoning districts in Fairfax County, sharing that uniqueness with Burke Center and Cardinal Forest. Bob has added some good language in there that we would like to incorporate, namely indicating that RA represents the interests of over 58,000 residents, which is an important point to make. However, we would like to retain the language about our sharing the PRC zoning district designation with Burke Center and Cardinal Forest in the hopes that the three of us together will be able to represent the unique interests of PRC district communities.
Over the coming months. So you would combine the two. And Sarah, you had your-
I was just going to ask Larry or John if they could share their screen. So-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Members could see the changes as we're reading it out.
Hmm. So Lisa, do you have, I think Bob's edits?
I would like to ask, Bob, did I fairly represent our conversation today?
Yes. Thank you. As I mentioned to you, my objectives was to be respectful but forceful, recognizing that this is, we have one bite at the very end of this. And to remind the Board of Supervisors, as much as it affects everyone else in the county, since we represent the, probably the single largest block of voters, to remind them of such.
Yeah. I like having the number in there. And-
And I also, you know, one of the problems with ZMod, and I will pontificate just very briefly and then stop, is this is the first rewrite of the zoning ordinance since 1978, wholesale change. So the expressed intent from the beginning of both Clarion, the consultants that really did the lion's share of the work on this together with county staff, was to modernize. And they were, they also included the term time after time of streamlining the zoning ordinance. So we are in an asymmetric environment. In other words, there are certain parties that have more influence, more power, and more information, and it's not the citizens. So I will stop there. There are a lot of changes. We just will not, we are approving changes to the zoning ordinance that we don't know how the whole thing will fit together because of the way that it's been constructed.
Yes. And our goal is to slow this down and give us a bit more time to participate and drill down into some of the details. Certainly, we, Larry, John, Hank and I have had some opportunity in the last number of weeks with the supervisor's office to do a bit more drill down on some specifics that, like, oh, yes, well, we hadn't thought, well, we could handle it this way. Well, yeah, but I kind of would like to know that going in, not after the fact. And we know they'd like to implement this come July. So I think that our goal here is to follow up on our word, which we had in our November 25th letter, where we said, we're going to come back at you with more specifics. And here's the specifics. Here's our resolution with all the details. And, you know, now what, right? Kind of support that. So what I understand from John and Bob is, and Larry, in reviewing the draft that Bob Patraine has presented, which is what is on our screen, is that generally, we would accept all of his changes, except, and Lisa, I'm going to try to help us go through this. There you are at the bottom of that screen where it says representing the interest of over 50,000 residents. We would keep sharing that unique uniqueness with Burke Center and Cardinal Forest. That's how I believe we're looking at changing that particular phrase.
Julie, we probably have to say sharing that unique PRC zoning district with Burke Center. And so we'd have to, due to the addition of the number, we'd probably have to change it just a touch, but-
Sharing that unique PRC-
Designation, zoning designation with Burke Center and Cardinal Forest.
Sorry. The fox is out there, I can tell you. All right. And then-
So can I, are we going to, are we going to unbreak sharing the unique, sharing the unique center and Cardinal Forest?
We're going to keep that in our document. Know whether or not you can make that change as we speak, Lisa. I was just-
I actually have the screen share, and I'm editing it as we go.
Then the next change in the-
So Larry, Julie, to interrupt, Larry, do you want to add the wording in there as well while you're at it?
I thought he did. Oh, he didn't.
What, so what, they have-
Say, sharing that unique-
Or sharing that PRC zoning designation solely with, perhaps is the best way to put it, with Burke Center and Cardinal Forest.
Delete the word uniqueness. Yep.
So as a threesome, we're unique in the county, but-
Yeah. And then the next page, in the first, now therefore be it resolved?
Larry and I recommend retaining the original language.
Yes. So we would take out of Bob's, the defer its current schedule. We keep the words that we had. And then does it still read all right?
Yep.
Well, not really, but we'll-
No, not right. Yeah, to permit full consideration.
Yeah. Nothing like doing this on the fly, right?
Then I think once we-
I'm doing it on my original, so you could do a comparison after we're done.
Okay. Yeah, because it's hard to pay attention while doing it, actually.
Yes, it is.
So there's one more. Further down, we want to keep our entire statement of be it further resolved, that RA supports ZMod's. That is all read there. We want to keep that entire statement.
Correct. Yes.
Okay. So after that, I think basically we're saying we are okay with Mr. Patraine's changes, suggested changes.
Right. The one question you had, Madam President-
Yes.
And Bob may know the answer to this, but you asked concerning the-
Vehicle size.
Exactly. The third last, be it further resolved on Bob's page four, whether the ZMod had any regulation of the size, not just the number of vehicle trips, or, yeah, not only the number of vehicle trips, but also the size of the vehicles. And Bob, were you able to find anything on that?
Not yet, but I should, I will look as we continue to discuss and send you-
Put that in at the moment. So, you know, should we find something, we can strike it before it goes out on Wednesday morning. But in the meantime, we have lost my concern about, are they addressing the size of the vehicles?
Yeah, I think the way to address that, Julie, is if the board moves to approve this in their motion, maybe reflect that, you know, if we find out information on delivery vehicles, to include language to that effect.
Mm-hmm.
But we, or we could tentatively, as Julie suggested, simply add there with no limitation on the frequency, we could say size or frequency of delivery vehicles. And if we find that they have addressed it, then we can eliminate that.
Right. I'd rather have it in for now and strike it if we find something that tells us differently.
Added size and-
I'd probably say frequency and size. But that's okay.
You've got it, Larry. Good.
Yep. So that is what we would like to submit. Any further discussion as people have reviewed it and prep for tonight's meeting?
Madam Chair, I'd like to start things off by making a motion that we approve this resolution as amended.
Second, thank you, Sarah. Discussion.
I have a comment.
Please.
First off, I apologize for being late. I was tracking it as a 6:30 meeting instead of a 6 o'clock meeting.
Caught you too. You're the second one.
So I had a comment to, and you may have covered this already, to Bob's comment about whether RA has any oversight on the ALUs. And as I've been thinking about it, I, have we already talked about what does this mean as far as what is considered a household under our deed? Because all of our households pay dues and things. Is this a long discussion I've already missed?
No, you haven't. It's something that I actually began having that discussion I think it was Tuesday morning. I was asking similar questions about ALUs and how do we do our assessments. So I'm happy to bring you up to speed on where that is, which is going to, was going to be part of my comments as well. We assess by lot, not by occupancy. And so our deed is associated with a lot. Of course, apartments are handled differently, but they're apartments when they have a definition. I don't know, which, this is also why I think it's really important that this thing be provided more time to review it. I'm concerned that if we have a number of single-family dwellings and townhomes that do add accessory living units that are in essence equivalent to an apartment as opposed to a mother-in-law suite, right, for a family member, that-
Well, and I think it comes down to, a lot of our services we provide based on households as well. So if you do have an entirely independent household, two households living in a lot, how do we decide how many pool passes they're allowed?
Right.
It's probably, if it gets to that point, it's probably, hey, we need two Reston dues, and then we have two households, and each household independently can purchase passes and so on. It's, it probably modifies how we operate.
I think, and Tony, you can correct me, there's certain things we can do by virtue of our, that we can't do because our assessment's associated with a lot. But then there are certain things we can do based on, like you say, our recreation passes or something like that that we could do, that our governing documents would allow us to do.
Yeah, I wonder if we could explore whether creating an ALU, especially one that incorporates the entirety of one floor of the house-
Right.
-is essentially subdividing the lot.
Right. I don't, I don't know, but it is something that just-
Especially if it obtains a separate address. Especially if it obtains a separate address.
Right, 101A versus 101B.
Right.
Peppermint Court, yeah. And the other thing that we've been pushing hard, Larry's been like a song on this, that, and which we spoke to DRB on Tuesday night about was, we, we would like to have advanced notice, right? We don't want to learn about all this stuff happening after the fact, after they've already gotten a county permit or whatever, so. And that's both home-based businesses and ALUs, the accessory living units. Shall I say, or Larry, I think we can probably take down the shared screen so we can get back to.
Julie, Sarah has remained up. I don't really.
That's why I was looking back. Okay, Sarah.
Julie, I have a question for Tony. If we had an address change, would there be an amendment to those deeds in the property?
So the way you subdivide a lot is you report a new plat and you report a new deed. You know, simply because you split a house doesn't mean the lot has been divided. So in your question, Sarah, if they were gonna have a separate address change, 122 and 121, presumably they've gone to the county and done what was necessary to subdivide the lot. Again, there's a lot to, there's a lot to do with subdividing a lot, please pardon the pun. And it can't necessarily be done just because you are living entirely separate within a house. English basements, for instance, are routinely used in DC, but it's still a rental unit that part of the actual home.
Yeah, the other factor too is that, you know, and this is in the FAQs on ALUs, is that, you know, the owner has to, has to live in the house.
Right.
It cannot be where, you know, so if the, if the owner applies for an ALU, the basement is, you know, lived in separately. If the owner sells, that right does not convey to the next owner. It's a complete reapplication. So that permit travels with the owner specifically.
Thank you, Tony. Thank you, Larry.
Any other thoughts? This particular one that we have affects us specifically on our assessments and, and is not something I think that is addressable in our concerns about the Z mod. John?
Julie, I, I, I should refer to the last be it further resolved, and I'm gonna read it because it's a very important point.
Okay, Larry, you want to bring it back up?
Sorry, I should have thought of this.
Last one you said.
Yep. So this is not, this point is not scheduled to be before the Planning Commission or the Board of Supervisors at this hearing, but it's something that we urgently need them to take, take into consideration at the hearing and in what is described as Phase Two of the Z mod work. So it is be it further resolved that when Z mod processes eventually takes up the question of the planned residential community zoning ordinance, district used in Burke Center, Cardinal Forest and Reston, the close coordination and legal connection between the PRC zoning district regulation and the Fairfax County Comprehensive Plan is continued, reaffirmed and strengthened. There are, there are, there are people who have talked about absorbing PRC zoning designation into some other zoning designation. There, there would not have been a Reston without a PRC ordinance.
Right.
And I would, I would argue, I'm persuaded that it would be very hard for Reston Association to continue without the PRC ordinance. Because that ordinance gives the power of the zoning ordinance to the comprehensive plan, and it is, that is unique in the, that, that property of planned districts is unique within the Fairfax County zoning ordinance. Because otherwise, the, the the policies described in the comprehensive plan are mere, are advisory. But in, in planned districts, they have the force of the zoning ordinance itself. So we need that connection retained and strengthened in the next phase of the Z mod consideration.
So it's good we have that in there.
Yep.
While you're on, have that open, Larry. Mr. Patrean did find the answer on the delivery vehicle size.
Okay.
So the vehicle size is that it cannot exceed a maximum length of 28 feet. The use of semi-trailers, including tractor or trailer units for delivery or distribution is not permitted for the home-based businesses. So therefore, I think we can probably remove the size. Sarah.
So this is Hank.
Hank.
The only thing when it comes to vehicles, it's not just the size, it's the weight of, that they can carry. That's literally what tears up the roads.
Yeah.
I didn't see any mention of, when I went through it, I didn't see a mention of what the weight could be. So you could have a construction company come in with a, a dump truck shorter than 28 feet, but loaded down with 10,000 tons, 10,000 pounds to 20,000 pounds. And if it did that regularly, would truly be tearing up the road significantly, eventually. Not saying that's gonna happen, but if it's, they're, they're mentioning vehicles by length and not by weight.
Right. So are you suggesting that we might wish to put a weight in there, replace size with weight?
Or add it to size, add weight to size.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the weight should be. I'm not, you know, a, a traffic engineer. I don't know what the, the roads are built around, but I do know that's the big factor that will tear up the roads.
Right.
So it's just something, I don't think it's critical. I just think it may be as we go through this to keep an eye on it.
It's probably unlikely that for a home-based business, deliveries would be, the things delivered.
Home-based, yeah.
Would not be of a heavy weight, but the delivery trucks possibly be, not probably, but possibly.
Yes.
There is a limitation on production facilities in, in the, in the regulation. So although I agree with Hank, you know, it's silent as to weight, but I also agree with John. It's, it's highly unlikely that this would be much more than, you know, like FedEx truck size. But it's, it's worth sticking in.
That's what I was gonna say. There's nothing, nothing lost by putting it in, by adding the limitation on the weight or frequency, right?
Right. I'd, I'd, I'd be, I'd be okay with adding weight instead of size.
Any other comments from the board on this document? As we said, we plan on delivering it in writing. And if we handle this piece, then we can go on to the second question is, is there any other delivery method that we wish to?
Julie, I have a quick, quick question for Larry.
Please.
Larry, you sent us an email this afternoon that the staff had more edits from, on Z mod. Have we had a chance to look at those? Does that impact us?
I scanned over that. I don't know if you had a chance to do that, John Mooney?
I did not. I saw it very late.
I did not see anything in there that would.
Right.
Change statements.
Yeah, I didn't see anything either. I did, I did look through it fairly quickly to, to see if anything jumped out at me that was contrary to that. Seemed to me there was one piece, but it seemed more along the lines of the, you know, the, the chart.
I looked at the cover memo and, and what they mentioned as new additions did not raise any concerns to me, but I did not have a chance to review the ordinance itself. The text.
I also didn't see anything that pertained, that would have impacted this resolution.
There is a reference at the very, at the very last item of the, of the list of changes in Article Nine, Definitions and Ordinance Interpretations under home-based businesses. And I don't know what to make of this, so I will leave it to people that are smarter than I. It says, deleted the language from the definition that the business must be conducted by a resident.
Yeah.
Interesting. The use specific standards specify who may be involved in a home-based business. So without having a chance to go back and read it in context, we should, you know, somebody should review this before we finalize.
Would, would you read that amendment again, Bob, one more time?
It is, it says, it relates to Article Nine. It's on page 683, lines eight and nine. It relates to home-based businesses. It says, deleted the language from the definition that the business must be conducted by a resident. The use specific standards specify who may be involved in a home-based business.
Because I remember that home-based business, you could have employees.
Yes, one.
Yeah, so perhaps they were trying to address that, but yeah, that was one of the, the things I noted.
Could we get our counsel to give us feedback on this? Or maybe we tie our resolution to the previous version and not to the new edits? Thoughts?
I think, could we not in our cover letter include that our resolution, you know, was on the basis of information we had up to the email, you know, their email, as you say, their letter dated, whenever, the 19th, I think, is when that came, their letter. Yeah, January 19th from Leslie, where they had some additional updates. You know, what we could do is, back to Sarah's point, is we could go ahead and, and review that which Larry shared with us today, and we could do unanimous consent on any additional resolution adds to the document we approved tonight.
Sure.
But that would require unanimous consent as opposed to just our majority that we have tonight. Karen.
There's nothing to stop this board from amending its resolution going forward. We amend resolutions routinely.
True.
Okay.
I'm just trying to understand why they, they want to eliminate the stipulation that it, it, a home-based business must be owned by the, by a resident?
I think it is that it's operated by a resident.
It is operated by a resident? Isn't that, isn't that what a home-based business is? Well, and what they said was part of what they were doing that they listed here for us was making sure they didn't have conflicts, that, that the, I, I don't know what the language was in that because I'm not pulling up page 683, but somebody wants to on lines eight and nine. So this particular thing said that their change would be that we delete the language, that it must be conducted by a resident, that the use specific standards specify who may be involved. And as I, as you say, I recall the home-based business is that it must be the owner.
So as a, as a layperson and a business owner, my understanding is I could rent your basement, Karen, and have, I don't know, a pottery studio. It's still a home-based business and I'm conducting it and I'm not the resident.
But you're, it's not your home that you're conducting.
Correct. It doesn't say it has to be my home, so.
Kind of goes along that accessory living units becoming a building. So.
What if we, what if we added another whereas along this line? Be it further resolved that the Reston Association is concerned about the ambiguity of the January 19th, 2021 change in Article Nine allowing the ho, allowing home-based businesses to be operated by someone other than the owner.
Well, I kind of feel like unless we pull up page 683 and see what exactly it is, we're trying to address something with only half, half information. I'd rather be, I'd rather, you know, take what we've got and then go back and amend it.
The other, the other important point too is that, you know, this, this is the planning commission hearing. And, you know, as Walter indicated, you know, it's likely to be deferred for decision, so they'll go, go through with the hearing. Staff may make some adjustments. We do have a whole nother bite at this when it goes to the board.
Board of, Board of Supervisors, which is expected in March. So we could also look to send any amendment or any change. And we could deal with that in our February board meeting. And still be timely for the Board of Supervisors.
And, and my hunch is that there will be, based upon the testimony and the concerns that are gonna be expressed at the Planning Commission next week, my hunch is that there are gonna be, you know, a number of revisions to the draft before it gets to the Board of Supervisors.
But just, just so those unacquainted with the process know this, the Planning Commission has one public hearing. It may defer its decision, but that does not mean that there are other opportunities to testify before the Planning Commission. So we, we get one chance, we get one chance to prepare, to present our concerns to the Planning Commission in a public hearing context.
Well, and since we, we haven't discussed yet the how and the who on the public hearing, I think that we have some amount of time between tonight and Thursday night to take a look at the memo that we just got from the county today and see how we might wish to change our testimony. May not change our approved resolution that I hope to get through tonight. But certainly we would be able to surface other concerns in our verbal testimony.
Yeah, I, Bob read the section to it. My own preference would be to amend the motion to include the additional whereas that I began talking about. Based on Bob's reading the text to us and this, and the ambiguity, at least I find in it, I think it would be easier to have an agreement on that tonight. And then if, if we see after further study a reason to remove it, we could remove it later. I think it's easier to remove than to put in. That's my own personal preference.
Do you wish to try to restate what you'd like to see in there and see if Larry can capture it?
Now, if I could interrupt, I think I found the reference. The, the, the county must have used the non-annotated version. So with, but I only have the annotated version. Under definitions of home-based business, it says, an occupation, profession or trade that is conducted within a dwelling unit by a resident of the dwelling unit as a use that is clearly incidental and subordinate to the. as a use that is clearly incidental and subordinate to the residential purpose of the dwelling unit. So they've removed the requirement that the, that the home-based business must be, you know, conducted by a resident, so it can be someone else outside. At least that's the way I read it. Let me read it one more time. A home-based business, an occupation, profession, or trade that is conducted within a dwelling unit by a resident of the dwelling unit as a use that is clearly incidental and subordinate to the residential purpose of the dwelling unit.
And that's what they want to change?
Yes.
And, and once more, Bob, the change would be?
To eliminate the requirement that the operator of the business be a resident of the dwelling unit.
I think, my own view is we have enough to go on to express our concern.
I would agree. Now that we've got it, the context that Bob presented to us tonight, I would agree that we should add something. I mean, we're talking about a planned residential community where what suddenly we're going to have businesses popping up in.
So is Article Nine definitions, Bob?
Yes.
So let me, let me try to read it again if somebody wants to take his or own try at it. But here, so be it further resolved that the Reston Association expresses its concern about the, about, about the eliminate, the eliminate, the proposal of January nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one to remove the requirement of operation by the owner of the dwelling unit in Article Nine's definition of home-based business. Something along that line.
Well, I think it's.
Resident.
I think the word is resident, not owner.
Resident, okay, resident, I'm sorry, yes.
So to make that change, whoever, Tony, if I get this correct, whoever moved and the seconded need to accept that as an amendment?
As the mover, I accept the amendment.
Sarah, accept.
That's not how we do it, Larry.
Okay, well, that's why I tossed your name in there.
We vote on the amendment. So someone moves an amendment, someone seconds it. We treat it like a separate motion that must be dealt with before the original motion.
Okay.
I so move.
And I will second it.
And I, as the mover of the first, the first motion, accept the amendment. All right, we have to vote on the amendment.
Vote on the, okay, so I'm looking for I's for.
Can we have discussion?
Sure.
Sorry, I thought we basically had, but go ahead, Sarah.
One suggestion is just if we can have, because I feel like we're rushing through it. There's one point that we caught. There might be more. If we could get, we all agree that we absolutely have to address the home-based business. If we can get counsel to take a look at the others, if there's nothing else, it can be a unanimous vote. If there's no other changes, just this one, again, we can vote unanimous. If there's more changes, we can look at that too. So just covering our bases.
Well, tonight we want to take a vote on the resolution as thorough as we can. We did discuss whether or not we couldn't include in our cover letter that there may be further input based on what we received today from the county. And yes, I, I do think that the materials that we received from the county today need to have a thorough review. So I, I would anticipate if we find anything, we'll be amending the resolution.
Okay.
May I ask a procedural idea?
Please.
If it is the decision of this body that they want counsel to take another look at this, we could defer this matter to Thursday's meeting in a week. Men the agenda, put it on for a quickie vote. If that's what this body wants to do. If this body wants to take it up tonight, certainly. But as an alternative, that could be done.
Well, the alternative, our problem is the public hearing is next Thursday night, which is why we're having a special meeting tonight so that we can submit our resolution Wednesday, next Wednesday morning.
Yeah. I, I, I always fear the uncertainty of the unanimous consent requirement.
Yeah.
I would rather trust the elimination of this point to a unanimous, unanimous consent item than its inclusion.
Yes, the, I think our intent is to make it clear to the county in our cover letter that we were addressing the Z mod as, you know, the draft dated on whatever it was. I think it was Thursday, was it Tuesday after Thanksgiving? Whatever the X number of pages, seven hundred and forty-one pages. And I think that, Bob, you included that in your.
November twenty-fourth.
There we go.
Yeah, yeah, November twenty-fourth, nearly, it is seven hundred and forty-one pages. So that's the version we are making our comments against. So that, that is in our current resolution. I would like to take a vote on the recommended addition that John has put forth with regard to home-based businesses and what appears to be the county's desire to remove the resident being.
The required operator.
The required operator, yes. So if I might call that question, I, I would like to do that. So all in favor of adding that to the current resolution we're looking at? That's an I from John, an I from me, an I from Karen, an I from Bob, Tom and Aaron are all I's. Do I have any nays? Sorry. Or I don't see any nays, how about any abstentions?
I'm going to abstain, Julie.
I'm?
I'll abstain.
Okay, so we've got an abstention from Sarah and we don't have then or Mike. So I think we've counted all the votes. And that would pass, so.
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the, the resolution as, as just amended.
Second.
Thank you, Karen. Any discussion on that? Right, I'd like to take a vote on.
Are we still including the cover letter, Julie?
Yes, we would still have a cover letter. So our vote now is to accept the amendment.
amended.
Amended.
Right, I'm, I'm, I'm on the right order, right? We have, we're not yet voting on the resolution yet.
No, we're, the motion was to approve the amended resolution.
Oh, okay. I wasn't sure if I missed an amendment there. Okay. Any discussion?
Brief discussion?
Any further discussion on the amended resolution?
Yes, we have a member's suggestion from Jennifer Justchuk that I think we should at least consider.
I thought that I had.
Oh, okay, excuse me.
That's why I was referring to the fact that we say.
Okay, got it.
Beginning of, of the whereas, the specific seven hundred and forty-one page document. And we would reiterate that again in our cover letter.
Right.
Cover letter that we have not had the opportunity to review thoroughly, that which they just sent us. We reserve the right to continue to review as they continue to modify.
Very good.
Any other discussion? All right, then I will take a vote on the I's for passing this resolution as amended. Let's see, John, myself, Karen, Sarah, Bob, Tom, Aaron. Two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Any cuts?
That's it. Okay, it passes.
John, will you send me that language, please?
I will.
And if you want, what I can do is send you the resolution that I was just working on. There's some spacing things that we need to clean up and, you know, stuff like that. Working on it live. So why don't I send that to you and search your language? And we can double check the format.
Sounds good.
Okay.
The second thing we had was, besides the fact that we would deliver it in an email, is participating in the public hearing itself. And that is the night that we have our regularly scheduled board meeting. And we have some pretty important topics on, on that particular night. We don't know when, that we might come up in the queue to speak. Or if we simply wish to provide a video of our comments. So any thoughts from anyone on, on that? I mean, obviously Larry can go and represent us to the public hearing. Depending on the timing, John, you may be able to step out or step back into our board meeting.
A process question. So when we make the presentation, if we did it live, do you have a Q and A part of it at all? John, do they ask questions or do you answer? Is there any value to us being there live versus making sure we have our points triple-checked in a video and done?
In, in previous testimonies before the planning commission, it sometimes happens that there are questions for the presenter. Not usually, but, but in a virtual session, I do not know how it works.
Typically, they, they do not ask questions. I mean, typically. Occasionally, they, they do, but I think there, there's going to be so much testimony provided next week that it's going to run really long and late. And I believe they will probably not ask a lot of questions, if any.
And if we did a video, and, sorry, Jennifer, if we did a video and Larry, you were at the meeting, do we cover our bases?
I think so.
Yeah.
I think so.
And we were coordinating with, as, as we mentioned earlier tonight, I think, with the other land use organizations within Reston who are also planning on doing their own YouTube or video or whatever. We had discussed whether or not we couldn't send, you know, a whole, whole package of all of us. That's a coordination issue that we're, we're still dealing with. But we had offered our assistance in doing that from.
And just so every, again, so she gets credit for it. Kami's been working at this for well over a week with the county, with the clerk of the planning commission to, to get permission to do that coordinated video.
And also to get us registered in sequence. So, so we are working that together. Karen.
What would, I, I, what do you envision the video to entail?
The reading of the resolution.
And that's it?
Right.
Okay.
That, that's our part in it. But for example, SOS would make their presentation. Twenty would make their presentation. Coalition for Plan Reston would make their presentation. And, and the point is we present it as a, kind of a unified, consistent county, or, or community testimony.
Gotcha.
We use successfully in the PRC testimony.
Okay, thanks.
Are we helping with the video for all of the organizations?
Yes.
Mm-hmm. I offered up Sean.
Thank you.
And also you should note that DRB is preparing their own letter to include in our transmittal. So Larry and I reviewed things with them Tuesday night and created a recommended letter, I think, that you captured, right, Larry? And Tony, the thoughts that were most important to the DRB folks. So we wanted to recognize that DRB is, is of its own kind of separate, you know, organization, if you will, and that they, their voice should be heard as well. I see Karen Noel, you're here with us tonight. I don't know if you wanted to add anything or Cam to the discussion about DRB. And certainly Erin and Tom, you were part of the DRB full board meeting the other night. So if anyone's got any comments.
Julie, one, I'm sorry. I have another comment, but not about DRB, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Karen, did, oh, you're on mute. Hold on, you're still on mute.
Look, Karen's, Karen's not on mute.
There we go.
Not me.
Karen Noel.
Karen Noel.
Of DRB.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry. Should have said Karen with a K.
I am. There she is.
There she is. There we go, Karen.
Still shows mute.
Yeah.
I've, I've sent her the request.
All right, I think you're good to go now, Karen.
Karen, I'm, I'm asking you to unmute yourself?
I thought I did. Sorry. No, I just wanted to get a, a general feel for the, the whole package that we're going in with. So I'll go back and work with everybody else. And it's been helpful to hear how you're proceeding. Thank you. John?
I do not, well, our general counsel can advise us whether we need to do anything special about this. But since we incorporated the new, now therefore be it resolved, I think we probably need to change the whereas that speaks about, this is the, the Z mod version issued on November twenty-fourth. We probably need to say with the amendments of January, January nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one.
But we haven't reviewed the amendments of January nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one. That's the point, is we haven't had the time to do that.
Right, but we don't say that we've reviewed the, the other one either. So. I mean, that, that does, the provision we just voted on does not appear in the November twenty-first version, that's my concern. So I, I don't think we have to redo the, the resolution. If, if, if people agree with me that we should note that we're taking that amendment into consideration.
I had anticipated covering that in the cover letter.
Why not a footnote?
Footnote?
A footnote. Simply, it's. So we had a moment to cursorily, cursorily review the changes on the nineteenth and reserves all rights, or something to that effect.
All right.
I like that.
Do we, so we should take a vote on that, yes, Tony?
Indeed.
All right.
Don't move.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Okay, all I's. Two, three, four, five, six, seven. We got it, all seven I's. Thank you. We got it, all seven eyes. Thank you. All right, Karen.
Oh, yeah, this in, this was a question I had, and I know it's been raised in a couple of chats, too. So beside reading the resolution, Larry, in your presentation, I assume that you're going to be going beyond that and and expanding on what the concerns are that are expressed in the non-support portions of the resolution.
Don't we have a time limit generally if we do a verbal presentation?
I know ten minutes. Ten minutes for an organization.
But that's going to be separate from the video where the resolutions from the various components are read. Is that right?
I, no, I think.
Or is that part of the ten?
It's either or.
Yeah, that's, I think, part of what Tammy was doing some research on to make sure that this, if we do it verbally, it's ten. If we do it via a video, it's ten. So, you know, while I I've kind of flippantly said that we would read the resolution, I know in the past, when we have presented at a hearing, we've also attached, you know, essentially attached the resolution and spoken a little bit more eloquently about our concerns. We, I don't think Larry or John, I have started to try to put together a verbal communication.
And that could be dealt with in the March BOS.
Well, it could be, but if we're going to submit, you know, if we're going to do a ten-minute video, you know, we've got to script it, right? And and or a ten-minute.
There's a lot of, a lot of work that needs to go into that and, you know, and frankly, it doesn't have to be ten minutes. I mean, I, you know, I think frankly, reading a resolution as public testimony is will bore the planning commissioners to tears. And I suspect there's about twenty other resolutions.
Right.
Floating out there from all kinds of different HOAs and citizens' associations. And so, you know, certainly the resolution in a cover letter, you know, would be submitted as the written testimony. But I guess, you know, if you want to leave it up to Julie, John and I and Hank to work out at least a a general script of it, which highlights the key points of the resolution. Karen, I think you have a good point of, you know, what does that really mean for our community? You know, where where does the the rubber meet the road? You know, when you think about home-based businesses and delivery trucks in clusters and things like that.
Right, yeah. Well, so I guess I misunderstood earlier when I thought you were saying this video was simply going to be each group reading their resolutions.
No, we've we've talked with the other community groups about some level of coordination of making points, knowing that we were limited in how much time we could each, you know, spend. And so, you know, trying to make sure that some of the key pieces are addressed by each in our time limit, but a coordination between all the groups. So we've got a lot of work to do before next Wednesday morning in this in this particular area, but this was the first we could pull off this special meeting. Yes, Sarah?
Can I, Larry, can I ask that we include Mike in that discussion? And maybe if we have, if we don't cross the five board member limit, include Bob or one of the others who are interested in this topic.
Them in what fashion?
Yeah, whi- which Mike Leoni?
Leoni.
He generally does review anything we do publicly.
Yeah, the the purpose of the orchestration that Tammy was trying to get permission to do, and John referenced it earlier about the PRC zoning ordinance orchestration we did, is that people, we didn't repeat one another. And again, you know, if you look at RCA's, you know, resolution and certainly their appendices and some of the others, many of you aren't on these emails. There's been hundreds of emails flying around the last two weeks. McLean Citizens Association, Sully, Fairfax National, there's all kinds of them out there. And a lot of them repeat the same thing. And so what we were hoping to do with the Reston groups is have one kind of fundamental piece that explains, you know, the major concerns, then each group kind of builds on that, but not necessarily repeat it. So, you know, if that video of the, let's just pick a number, five groups ends up being, you know, thirteen minutes long, even though we could have done sixty minutes or whatever, fifty minutes, you know, as long as the key points are hit, that's that's the important piece of it. Because there's a lot of repetition even amongst the Reston community groups.
Right. We good?
I think what I'm hearing is is we're we'd like to present verbally if we can, if that makes sense, as we try to figure out what what the county's doing and getting scheduled up and coordinate with some of the other land use groups in in Reston. And we'll be working on both the cover letter yet and the commentary. Either of those ready for you tonight? Not a whole lot different than what I think we did on some of the other ones in the last couple of years, is it, John and Larry, where we went and presented to the county?
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
The big difference here is the is the mode, not the message.
Right, right. Well, that's certainly correct. Different to have all of us and all the yellow shirts show up at the county county building, right? And wait.
It was impressive, did make a difference.
Yeah, so. There's not any other further discussions. I believe we have taken care of our business for our special meeting. We need disagreements on that. And we're only eighteen minutes over the allotment, and I forgot to ask to extend it.
Do we need to take a vote on the, on doing a video presentation? Is that?
Yes, no? I don't think so.
No, okay.
Okay, then we've passed the resolution. We'll go to work, John, Larry, myself, Mike.
And 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 I'll be sure to consult with Bob Petrino, as you suggested, Sarah.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah.
And we get, we get a look at it before it goes out on Wednesday, just.
Only if we have makeup.
Well, first, we have to figure out whether or not we're doing videos, if they'll be accepted and next. But, yeah, we certainly will share whatever letter, the cover letter that would go with the resolution and perhaps some draft of of the key points that we would expect to state.
Thank you.
All right, I am ready for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Thank you, Sarah.
Second.
Second from Karen, all in favor.
The two stripes.
We coordinated.
We did.
Take no prisoners, okay? Thank you very much. It was a pleasure tonight.
Good night.
Who have worked so hard on this.
All right.
All right, good night, everybody.
Good night.
Night.